Welcome to this meeting in the Wooddale Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Roy Sei. I'm chairman of Wooddale Zoning Board of Appeals. Will Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Kopp, Mrs. Schroeder, and Mr. Davis are absent. Mr. Crusiani, Dr. Madonna, Mr. Kadala, and Chairman Sei.
Here. I declare a quorum present. We have two public hearings scheduled for tonight. The hearings will be transcribed by official court reporter and all testimony will be given under oath. At the hearing, there will be an opportunity for the public to offer testimony and comment. Following the public hearing in these cases, our deliberations will be open to the public in the sense that all are invited to listen and to watch. The public, however, may not speak during our deliberations. The zoning ordinance requires a prevailing vote by a majority of the members of the zoning board of appeals for which matters will be referred to the city council for approval on those matters on which the zoning board appeals will make the final decision. We ask that the applicants here tonight provide a general description of their proposal and then give up specific evidence to demonstrate the applicant's proposal meets the standards of the zoning ordinance for the relief requested. The burden is on the applicant to prove the case. But respect to others who wish to speak, you may give an opinion or present specific evidence as to why you believe that the applicant meets or fails to meet the standards for the relief requested. Finally, we will strictly adhere to the schedule prepared for tonight's meeting. In the case of an applicant or in event you or your attorney have filed an appearance as an objector, you'll be afforded sufficient time within to present your evidence. Whether you are a member of the public wishing to make a statement for the record or a witness testifying on behalf of the applicant or an objector, you will be placed under oath and then begin by stating your name and address. If you're not presenting evidence on behalf of the applicant or an objector, your remarks will be taken after the applicant and all those who have filed an appearance as objector have presented all of their evidence. You will be subject to question by the zoning board of appeals and the applicant or the objector. To allow as many people as possible to be heard, if you're not an applicant or objector, we request that your remarks be limited to five minutes. If additional time is needed, the hearing will be continued until next available date. I will now call the first matter before us this evening. First matter before us is case number 06-ta-7 regarding a petition of the City of Wooddale for text amendments to the zoning code, Chapter 10 and 11, to allow for proposed increases in fees charged for the purpose of an application for zoning change or variation in creating a fee schedule for applications for subdivision, lot consolidation, or planned unit development. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Crusiani. Dr. Madonna. Mr. Kadala. Chairman Sei.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Roger, please indicate when the notice of the hearing in case number 06-ta-7 was published for the purpose of the text amendment and whether, as secretary, you have the certificate of publication from newspaper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again and good evening and welcome. We are in receipt of the certificate of publication for this case number 06-ta-7 received from the Daily Herald. The public notice was published on July 1st, 2006 with the control number of 3773253. Thank you.
Who's going to talk on this? Okay. You want to give a brief outline on this, Roger?
Certainly. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Before you, you have this case specific to the City of Wooddale. And basically what this amounts to is not just a housekeeping situation where we're going to be changing the text, but we're in need to increase these fees because in recent past, we found that in a majority of these cases, we're not collecting enough fees to cover the expenses. That would be specific to the zoning board of appeals standard application for variance as well as for a special hearing. Currently, the standard variance application is $455. We're seeking to increase it to $555. The special hearing application is currently at $555. We're seeking to increase it to $655. There's also consideration for our present subdivision fee, which is $50. And just to give you a little background information, that fee has not increased one penny since 1976. We are bringing these costs and these fees more in line with surrounding communities and the actual cost of processing these particular types of requests. Along with the subdivision application fee increase from $50 to $500 per lot, we are seeking to have a lot consolidation application fee also, which would again be $500 per lot, and a planned unit development fee of $3,000. And we are just seeking these increases to offset the processing and other cost interest increases rather related to this type of application. Thank you.
Okay. I got a few questions here, Roger. On the subdivision application, you go from $50 to $500 per lot.
Correct.
You know, that's a pretty substantial increase there. And the other one was the fact that, you know, all the years I've been on this board here, we've always talked about Mr. homeowner, the average homeowner comes in for a minor variation. He might have lived in the house for 20 years and all of a sudden he wants to put an addition on. And he finds, you know, maybe one corner of the house is encroaching a little bit in the easement. Now, I thought we're, you know, I would like to see like a homeowner variance application with this, or I don't know whether it can be done. That'd be up to council. Rather than, you know, for a guy that comes in, you know, maybe his family increased or, you know, he wants a little bit bigger home and the fact that start hitting him with $555, you know, I thought we're going to start taking the plight of the homeowner in consideration here because, you know, the cities hit these people with so many fees this year. They hit them, increased the vehicle stickers, they increased the water, they increased the sewer rates, you know, everything is increased in the fact that, you know, I'd like to see an additional, what would you call it, subdivision or like a homeowner variance application. I don't know whether that's discrimination or I don't know whether you can do it that way or not.
Well, my recommendation would be, in response to your request for concern over fees, I think what the City of Wooddale has attempted to do while there have been fee increases, the fees are such that they're in the line with the user fee. If you're going to come in and make an application for a variation, you should bear the cost as much as possible rather than having all the property owners in Wooddale bear that. And so I think what Roger's explained is that the fees, the fee increases that he's seeking are for two reasons. One, to bring it more in line with what the cost actually is to get that variation. And that won't change, at least I don't believe that changes too much between a regular homeowner and a larger property owner. And what that does is that it offsets the cost that you might pay to assist a property owner in doing that and then also to bring them in line with other communities. I think that that should be the focus rather than trying to provide property or provide fee relief to one person versus another. It should be a fee that recognizes two things, the cost to provide the service and making it so that, you know, you want to be, you want to review what other communities are charging as well.
Well, that's just my thoughts. So, you know, that was one of my concerns. Roger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, just a little bit more background, these particular fee increases and suggestions had been discussed at great length during our budget process. And these are really items that had come out of the budget hearings and we were following direction and from the city council with regard to this, these specific increases.
Okay. If this came out of your meetings, this, these are the fees that the city wants.
Correct.
There's no, you know, so we're just okaying it right now.
Basically, that's it. Being such that these fees are incorporated within the zoning ordinance, that is why it's come before this body to complete the initial phase of the process, then it'll be going on to city council.
It's also to provide the public hearing requisite for changes to the zoning code. And when you make change to the zoning, a text change, it should come before this body and to allow any member of the public the opportunity to make comment on it. You do serve in an advisory capacity as well, though, Chairman Sei, so if you do have comment, even though the city council may have looked at the fees, you know, part of your role here is to provide them the benefit of your guidance. If you have a concern, then that is one that will be taken to the city council again. None of the fees are cast in stone until the city council votes on them.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? Mr. Crusiani?
I agree that some of these fees should be increased, but tenfold on subdivision application, I think that's pretty tough. From $50 to $500 per lot. A lot. I think that's out of line.
Well, mind you, though, if I can interject, Mr. Chairman, this is a fee that was established back in 1976. Although I'm not an actuary, I would be thinking about how much impact that $50 would have on today's market. And it seems to me like the $500 per lot would not be completely out of line based on the 30 years increase in rate.
Any other comments? Doc Madonna?
When you're talking about lot consolidation application, you're talking about a person who comes in and wants to go from two lots to one lot and he's going to pay $500 per lot?
That is correct. Or at times, we do have individuals who want, in the past, we've had individuals come in with four lots to create two lots.
Right.
So it would be that typical type of situation.
So they would be paying on all four lots even though the ultimate goal would be to reduce the amount of lots?
Correct.
Okay. Second question that I have on the planned unit development. If you are taking a subdivision application and increasing it $500 per lot at six lots, you're talking about that would be equal to the planned unit development $3,000 fee. Most planned unit developments in this city have been in excess of 100 units. So it seems to me that there's some inequity here. You're talking about a planned unit development where you're not doing it on a per-unit basis, but you're doing it in a subdivision on a per-unit basis. And I believe that a planned unit development should be, the fee should be set the same on a per-unit basis. Most planned unit developments are 100 units or more. The one up north was 128. The one on Irving Park was 116, something like 130, whereas you're charging one fee of $3,000, whereas someone who comes in with an eight-lot subdivision would be paying more than someone who has 110 or 115 units. So my only recommendation to the city council would be for them to review planned unit development portion and somehow the lot consolidation application portion where you're penalizing the person who wants to make a larger lot by having him pay for both of the lots that ultimately would be consolidated into one lot. If it's the other way around, I can see that fee applying. If you had two lots and wanted to make three out of it or something like that, then I can understand it. But those would be my only comments. Since, if the city council is looking for feedback, I think it's very inequitable to say to a planned unit developer, for $3,000, we don't care how many units there are, but to say to a subdivider, it's $500 per unit. That would be my only comments.
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Madonna, so I won't even go into that issue. I do have a question for Roger. The current subdivision application fee, is it $50 flat or $50 per lot?
It's a flat fee.
Then I would strongly recommend that the proposed fee of $500 per lot be capped off at $500 flat fee. If the city staff's time and money into the study of such a project does in fact fit within that $500 cap. I mean, if that's enough to compensate you, I think that, you know, tenfold might be bearable, but at a point at which, you know, you're maybe trying to do three or four, you know, lots and what would have cost you $50 last year is now going to cost you $2,000. That's a bit of a jump. The other thing I would want to talk about is the lot consolidation application fee. I'm all for promoting lot consolidation. I'd like to see bigger lots in Wooddale and I hate like heck to see somebody have to pay to do that, especially at $500 a lot. I understand a subdivision application fee, there is processing fee and time involved. And let's face it, when you subdivide property, chances are pretty good you're going to make some money on it, but when you consolidate, you're doing it purely for the aesthetics and typically for yourself. So I'd like to see that $500 either removed, you know, not on there at all or possibly, you know, capped at like $100 or something. Once again, if the staff's, you know, time and efforts involved, you know, allow such a low fee. That's all I have.
Do you have all that, Roger?
What I don't have, Mr. Chairman, I believe Mrs. Chappetta does. And together, we should be able to get it all down in black and white. How hot it is outside. No. Just what we talked about, the subdivision fees and the impact it might have on a developer such as yourself.
Oh, Mike, you're going to have to get sworn in if you're going to make a comment. Oh, Mike, you'll have to go up to the podium.
The microphone will help you out, Mike. Is the green light on at the base of it?
I've been in Wooddale, you know, say, I've been in Wooddale for all my life. Let's put it this way. And yes, I do agree with the doctor. His theory is very, very sincere. You cannot approach someone and just overnight tell the guy, oh, by the way, that application that you brought yesterday, over the $50, it jumped to the $500. Now, I agree with another particular thing that he mentioned. It was the fact of if you do divide the property like I am over here tonight, seeking two lots out of one, yeah, I will agree to pay the $500. I won't mind that because I'm gaining something out of it. Now, I agree with the gentleman over here that consolidating the lots, you should not punish someone just because you consolidated the lots. When the builder gets something, I don't mind to pay for it and nobody should mind to pay for it. But if you, you know, if you take it away from them and plus you charge them fees, I think we should consider, you know, very much what we're talking about tonight over here.
Okay, Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Roger, is there a staff recommendation concerning this petition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The staff recommendation was to approve the fee increases as presented.
Okay. Is there any questions of Mr. Noack from the board concerning the staff recommendation? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion that closes public hearing later during this meeting. The board will commence deliberations on petitioner's request. I need a motion, a second.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Crusiani. Dr. Madonna.
Yes.
Mr. Kadala.
Yes.
Chairman Sei.
Yes. The motion is carried. The public hearing on case number 06-ta-7 is closed. The second matter on the agenda is case number 06-z8 regarding a petition of John Barado for rezoning an annexation of property located on the southwest corner of Creel and Bonoris Drive from R1 single-family residence, resident district upon the annexation to M1 Limited Manufacturing District to allow for construction and use of an office warehouse facility. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Crusiani. Dr. Madonna. Mr. Kadala. Chairman Sei.
Here. I declare a quorum present. I understand that petitioner has requested that this hearing be continued to allow proper compliance with all notice procedures. For this reason, I ask for a motion to continue this hearing to August 21st, 2006.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Crusiani.
Yes.
Dr. Madonna.
Yes.
Mr. Kadala.
Yes.
Chairman Sei.
Yes. Motion is carried. The public hearing in case number 06-z8 is continued to August 21st, 2006. We will now discuss the evidence we heard regarding the case number 06-ta-7, the petition of City Wooddale for a text amendment to Chapter 10 and 11 to allow for an increase in fees.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we may have skipped an item, the approval of the minutes of June 19th.
Okay, well, we'll back up then. Okay. There we go. Okay, well, okay, I need approval of the minutes of June 19th, 2006.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Mr. Crusiani. Dr. Madonna.
Yes.
Mr. Kadala.
Yes.
Chairman Sei.
Yes. What I'd like to do regarding this text amendment for the City of Wooddale with the fees, we gave staff our recommendations. I'd like to continue this till August 21st meeting, coming back with all our recommendations before we send this to city council.
Make that motion to continue it till August 21st?
A motion on a Florida, I have a second.
The motion is to what, to table it until then?
Table it till, we came up with a lot of good recommendations tonight and I would like to make sure that when we send this or approve this, it goes to city council that they know our feeling regarding the lot consolidations or, you know, and subdivision. You brought up a good point about planned unit development and stuff like, you know, these items here, and I think they're going to have to take this in consideration. So I, we have a motion to continue this till August 21st. I need a second.
Chairman can second it. I would not second it because if there is a, if there is a second, there can be no discussion in the motion to table, and I believe that there should be some discussion.
Oh, okay. Do you have some?
Well, I mean, the only thing I think is that the city council obviously has sent this to us with a predetermination on their own part, and I certainly have enough faith in our minute taker to be able to present what we have proposed and send it on to the city council. They're going to make the final decision no matter what. We're just the recommending body. And I'd like to see our recommendations forwarded and maybe another way of doing it, Mr. Chairman, would be maybe if you appeared at the meeting and presented the information that we tried to present, that might be another way of doing it, too.
Well, we could do that, but I would rather have it all written down and presented in writing to them. So I just don't want to have the zoning board look like the bad guys in this, this whole fee increase. There is a fact that right now, we're just like a barber and a winston, and we're kind of agreeing with what the city council says and I don't agree with this there. So, Roger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Dr. Madonna had mentioned, these particular commentaries by the individual members will be part of the PZB report, just in case you weren't specifically clear on that.
Well, the thing is, watching this, some of the city council aldermen come to the meeting and they just start opening up their agenda packet on the night of the meeting is a fact that I've got great concern that all these recommendations, all our concerns will not be listened to or even acknowledged. So, okay, there was a motion, we didn't have a second, so.
No, I'll second it. Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion to second to table this text amendment to August 21st, 2006. By that time, we should have all our concerns regarding the planned unit development, lot consolidation, subdivision application. We have all that information that we can present it right to the city council. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kadala.
Yes.
Mr. Crusiani.
Yes.
Dr. Madonna.
Yes.
Chairman Sei.
We will continue this at the August 21st meeting. Okay, we'll call the, oh, is there any other business?
Yeah, please. Before we go on, I do have a question, and it's not an item that's on the agenda, but I would like the, maybe the, add it to the next agenda. Under our minutes, if you noticed, that one of the concerns that we had is on a subdivision, no, on the Caroline Builders vacant lot recommendation on 317, one of the concerns we had is, does the proposed single-family resident conform to the residents in the area? And I understand now by reading some of the newspaper articles that the city council is considering a tear-down ordinance and a tear-down recommendation, and I'm a little bit surprised that zoning board is not involved at all in it, but I would like to see somehow that some concern be expressed about what we just talked about. That is, does the proposed tear-down in a single-family resident conform to the residents in the area? And it's something I believe that is not in the ordinance currently. And the reason, the urgency I believe tonight would be that we, if we do agree, that some wording should be in there, that we pass it on to the city council tonight because I believe they will be considering it at this next meeting. So either verbally going to a meeting and doing it, or if we agree, because every time we have some of these subdivisions coming before us or some of these bigger homes being come down, and the latest one was on Cedar, one of the concerns that we had had, although I believe the city council did eventually approve that, one of the concerns we had had is a large home being built next to smaller homes. I don't know if there's even a possibility of that being added to the tear-down ordinance, but I certainly would like to see the zoning board maybe make a recommendation to the city council if they consider some wording so that we don't continually be faced with the same problem we had on Cedar. Does a large- Does a larger three, two-story home belong next to a smaller ranch? So, my proposal would be to recommend, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, adding that, that we recommend to the city council that they seriously consider some of the concerns that we have had in the past, that when a tear-down occurs, will it be compatible with conform to the residents in the area? I'll make it in the form of a motion.
Bigger the form of a motion.
Okay, we'll recommend that the city council, they seriously consider adding some language into the tear-down ordinance that would allow this owning board certainly to have some impact as far as the proposed single-family residents conforming to the residents in the area where there are tear-downs.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
On the question, I might want to add to that, that not to, not to, you know, spend city funds that aren't necessarily there, but this might be a good place to bring in a design consultant to help with that verbiage, to talk about massing and scale. So that, you know, there's no question that this wording was put together by somebody who understands architecture and design and aesthetics. You know, it needs to, it needs to be in the form of legalese, but it also needs to, needs to have some design consideration to it, so I would just like to add that if the verbiage is in there, it'd be done by an appropriate professional.
Glad to add that to the motion.
Do you have all that, Marilyn?
I will massage it and say what you want it to say.
Massage it is a good thing.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Roll call, please.
We don't have a motion and a second on this.
Oh.
You're adding this to the agenda.
Well, he made a motion.
We need a mo, I mean, we have the motion.
Motion would be, motion was to, go ahead, was to recommend to the city council
Okay.
that they consider in their tear-down ordinance some provision that would allow the single-family residents to conform to the residents in the area after the tear-down. And Mr. Caddala was adding to the motion that it be done, go ahead, John, add your own.
By the appropriate professional as regarding architectural.
Get that the wording be designed by an appropriate design professional consultant-type individual.
You're making that to second.
And I will second that on top of it.
Okay.